Evening, I'd like to welcome everyone who is watching this telecast. I hope you're all well. Due to the COVID-19 pandemic, we will be conducting the meeting remotely. As a result of Governor's emergency declaration and his temporary adjustment to the Brown Act, we are able to continue the city's business while also protecting the health and safety of our residents. Consistent with his direction, we have asked that all public comments be submitted in advance of the meeting. As we get to each item, our city manager will identify all public comments that have been submitted. And although it's past the deadline now, I'd like to remind everyone that if you have any public comments, if you want to get them into the city by 2:00 PM on the day of the city council meeting, and the address is info@villa park dot org. The meeting is being streamed on our website and VP TV as done normally. For those interested, it will be rerun on VP TV and our website afterwards as regularly done. And also you can find it on YouTube. Hopefully, we will soon all be meeting in person again. Until then, let's get started. I hereby call the meeting to order. Steve, will you please call?
Okay, Councilman Colacott?
Here.
Councilman Pitts?
Here.
Councilman Rosini has notified us he'll be out ill tonight, so he's not. Mayor Pro Tim Zimmerman?
Here.
And Mayor Miles?
Yeah. Hey. Thank you. All right. Mayor Pro Tim Zimmerman, would you leave in the pledge of allegiance?
Sure, if everybody would like to rise and say the pledge with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America. To the republic which stands one nation, one nation. This is visible. Justice for all.
Yeah. Okay, so you probably noticed we have a new section on the presentations. And the first one is a COVID update. And the mayor and the city manager participate on Friday mornings in a weekly Zoom, or sorry, weekly telephone conference call with the Orange County Health Director and Dr. Chow and Mr. Frank Kim, who is the CEO, Orange County CEO. So every Friday, we participate in this with the other mayors and city managers. And this COVID update is going to be included in the agendas from now on so that we can kind of give everyone where we're at, any different information regarding the, what's going on either with the city or with the county, and then our numbers, our metrics. So I know that we have the information available on the website, but this just kind of gives a clear, concise bullet point. So as you know, Governor Newsom lifted the stay-at-home order effective yesterday as conditions are improving statewide, allowing most counties to return to the purple or the most restrictive tier. And that tier is, this means that hair salons, barber shops, nail salons, they can open indoors with modifications. Gyms can now be outside, open outside with modifications. Restaurants can now be open outside with modifications as well. And what's really great is our outdoor low-contact sports can resume like track running, swimming, tennis. And there's a lot more to this than what I'm saying right here. You can go to covid19.ca.gov or just type in Blueprint for a Safer Economy in your web browser, and you will be directed to a detail of what yesterday's announcement, what it all means, and what falls under this purple tier. And some of the numbers so far cumulative cases in Orange County, 225,983 with 163,200 recovered. Today, 1,365 cases in Orange County with 64 deaths. And Villa Park is at 268 cases. And those are the most current numbers as of a couple hours ago. As I mentioned, things are improving. Like our positivity rate has dropped from approximately 17.6% to 14.9%. But to put that in perspective, prior to the shutdown that happened in November, we were right around 7% positivity rate. So although we're moving in a good direction, we still have a long ways to go before we can get back into those different colored tiers that are going to allow a lot more freedom and openness. And some of the comments from Orange County Healthcare Agency, they've been working seven days a week to roll out this vaccine distribution. This situation is extremely fluid, extremely dynamic, there is no static to it. Things are changing constantly, as I'm sure you all are aware, daily, even hourly. Understandably, there's been a great deal of frustration and confusion surrounding this vaccine rollout and the Athena platform. The county is aware, they are addressing issues as they arise. But we do have to understand that it is all predicated by the availability of the vaccine. So if the vaccine isn't available, the appointments can't be made. So where do you go to get your vaccine if you fall into any of the tiers of Phase 1A? And for a reminder, there's a lot, but it's, any of the healthcare workers, dialysis centers, public health field staff, anybody 65 or older, our law enforcement officers that are working in like the jails or out in the street in a high-risk area, dental workers, things like that. Those are all considered the Phase 1A, all the tiers. And again, you can go to the Orange County Health Department website to get a direct list of everybody. But if you go on to bothena.com, you can register. And although there's been a lot of frustration in the county and the platform provider has provided a phone number. If you're having questions or problems, it's 714-834-2000, Monday through Friday from 8:00 PM. You can email at support@compositeapps.net. And we can put these on our feeder and on our website so people can get those. But you can go there and get help to help navigate the Athena platform. Right now, 1,118, 732 people have received the first dose of the vaccine. And 59,284 have received the second dose of vaccine. And some bullet points from the county that they'd like everyone to know. Most of you know that the county has opened its second POD or Super Point of Dispensing site at Socha University, and that happened on Saturday. Any future Super POD sites will again be determined by availability of the vaccine. Again, if you want the vaccine, you have to be in Phase 1A, all tiers, 65 or older, in law enforcement working in the high-risk areas. And they wanted to make sure everyone knew that the state allocates the vaccines to the Orange County Healthcare Agency hospitals like Kaiser or UCI Med or Providence, community health centers, and pharmacy partners like CVS and Walgreens. And the pharmacy partners are offering vaccines to residents of nursing homes and assisted living facilities, and they will reach out and communicate with the directors of those facilities. At last Friday's phone conference meeting, the county health director, it was mentioned that the federal government will potentially start sending vaccines directly to pharmacies, which kind of like a flu shot, but not yet, which will help seniors who struggle with technology. That was a big issue that we brought up. A lot of our seniors, you know, they're putting out this app. And it's a great concept, but unfortunately, a lot of our seniors are having the most frustration and trouble with that. So by hopefully getting vaccines out to these pharmacies, that will help some of our seniors that are having some of these problems be able to get the vaccine much easier. And I don't have a specific timeframe for that, that's just something that's hopefully happening in the future, again, depending on availability of vaccine. The two big questions that I've been receiving regarding the Athena has been once I'm registered in Athena, appointment notifications to those in the digital waiting room will be prioritized based on factors including age, time of registration, and availability of vaccine supply. And so once you register on Athena and you get invited to accept an appointment time, you have four hours to accept. If you don't accept within that four hours, you do not have to reregister. But what will happen is you then have to go on your own and continuously check the app or your email to find an available appointment time on your own, so to speak. And then the other one is about the second dose. So eligible individuals who receive their first vaccine through Athena system will automatically receive their second dose appointment confirmation through Athena. So they do not have to call again, they do not have to reregister, you will automatically be notified. And then if you didn't receive your first dose through the county, and let's say you did it through Kaiser, then you will go back to Kaiser and get your second dose through Kaiser. And that's it for the specific COVID county updates. I had some updates relating to COVID. Friday, January 15th, I had the opportunity to meet virtually Senator Dave Min. He's the California Senator for District 37, which we are in. And it was an introductory call, and I expressed concern about youth sports during the pandemic. And then on Wednesday, January 20th, I was granted a meeting with OUSD. And discussions have started creating a youth sports advocacy group for community sports programs. And that is it for the COVID update. Any questions? It's a mouthful.
Crystal, this is Councilman Colacott. It's my understanding there have been no deaths associated with COVID-19 in Villa Park?
That is my understanding as well.
That's quite impressive, given that we have the highest median age of any city in Orange County outside of the two leisure world communities.
Yes.
And of course, the older age groups are most endangered by the virus. So it's good to hear that we're making, so far, we're making this too well.
We are. I think we have a very caring community, so I think that's good. Okay, if no further questions, I would like to invite Mr. Jeff Taylor to give a presentation on the CalRecycle SB 1383.
Good evening, thank you for having me. My name's Jeff Taylor. I'm the Senior Environmental Scientist Supervisor for the South Section of CalRecycle's Local Systems and Market Development Branch. I also have Kara Morgan on, our branch manager on, and there she is. And she'll be answering questions, so let me give my screen shared real quick. I knew what was going to do this. Can you see it now?
A chat.
No.
There you go.
Yep, you see it.
All right. So thank you, like I said, thank you for having me. This presentation should provide a very high-level overview of the requirements for compliance with SB 1383. And you ask why is SB 1383 so important? Organic waste comprises 2/3 of California's waste stream. And food waste alone is the largest waste stream in California at roughly 18% of disposal. This is when 1 in 5 children go hungry every night. SB 1383 passed in 2016 as part of California's larger strategy to combat climate change. The law was designed to reduce global warming and super pollutants like methane, which is up to 84 times more potent than carbon dioxide. Landfills are one of the largest producers of methane in the state. As we know, when organic material breaks down in the landfill, methane is generated. So we need to move away from landfilling organic waste like food, paper, and yard waste. SB 1383 is a statewide target that requires California to reduce organic waste disposal by 75% by 2025, and increase edible food recovery by 20% by 2025. Organic waste is defined broadly in the regs and includes food waste, paper, cardboard, green waste, organic textiles, and carpets, lumber, wood, bile solids, digestate, manure, and sludges. CalRecycle has been collaborating with jurisdictions and other stakeholders over the past three and a half years to complete the regulations that are final as of November 9th, 2020. While the regulations take effect in 2022, jurisdictions have to plan now so they can be in compliance by January 1st, 2022. There are many benefits. We successfully implement California's super pollutant reduction strategy, including environmental benefits such as fighting climate change, improved air quality, and less landfill waste, providing millions of meals to Californians without enough to eat, and creating thousands of new green jobs. First, let me give a brief update of the rulemaking process for SB 1383. In January 2020, the department submitted the REGs to, the REG package, to the Office of Administrative Law. On November 3rd, 2020, CalRecycle received a notice of approval of regulatory action from the Office of Administrative Law on SB 1383 Short-lived Climate Pollutants Regulations. Attached to the notice, these regulations are final and set to go into effect January 1st, 2022. The regulations become enforceable on January 1st, 2022. This means, starting on January 1st, 2022, jurisdictions must have their programs in place, and CalRecycle can begin enforcement actions on jurisdictions and other entities, and other entities. In 2024, jurisdictions will be required to take enforcement action against non-compliant entities. This slide provides a brief overview of the program requirements that jurisdictions will be required to adequately staff and resource. We will cover briefly some of these requirements in the next few slides. Jays will be required to provide organic waste collection services to all residents and businesses. This is what we refer to as automatically providing service or universal service. The resident or business is automatically provided the service rather than subscribing to it. The REG standardize container colors across the state. And this to be fully implemented by January 1st, 2036. It requires a jurisdiction to place a label on each new container or lid provided to generators starting on January 1st, 2022. Jays can issue three types of waivers to generators. Physical space, collection frequency, those are just the name of few. The department can issue waivers to jurisdictions which delay or exclude implementation of some of the requirements, low population, rural exemption, and high elevation. The regulations also place requirements on residents and commercial businesses as well. Jurisdictions must conduct annual education and outreach to all generators. This includes information on methods for the prevention of organic waste generation, recycling organic waste on-site, and sending organic waste to community composting. This also includes information regarding programs for the donation of edible food. Jurisdictions must also procure certain levels of recovered organic waste products, compost, renewable gas, or electricity from a biomass conversion. Each jurisdiction will have a minimum procurement target that is linked to its population. Requirements to purchase recycled content paper and paper products if price and performance is comparable, that will be fine. CalRecycle will provide a calculator for a jurisdiction to use to calculate progress towards meeting this target. CalRecycle would notify jurisdictions of this target prior to January 1st, 2022. Each jurisdiction must plan for adequate capacity for recycling organic waste and edible food. Each county will lead this effort by coordinating with cities, special districts that provide solid waste collection services, regional agencies located within the county. CalRecycle will provide a tool for organic waste capacity planning and edible food recovery capacity planning. Jurisdictions must do an annual compliance review of commercial businesses to make sure that they have service. There are contamination monitoring requirements of the contents of the containers. Jurisdictions will typically delegate this task to their hauler. To reduce reporting, jurisdictions are required to maintain records and keep information in an implementation record. Each jurisdiction is required to report to the department annually on its implementation. Sorry about that. On its implementation efforts. On its implementation efforts. Did I move the slide for you guys?
Yes.
I did.
We're on the SB 1383 requirement.
Requirements, right, that's why I was just making sure. While the regulations take effect in 2022, jurisdictions have to plan now so they can be in compliance by January 1st, 2022. I went back too far, sorry. Jurisdiction must also procure certain levels of recovered organic waste products also. It keeps moving on its own. Sorry, I am so sorry, the...
That's okay.
Keeps moving on its own. SB 1383 extends beyond direct waste management. Let me make sure I'm on the right slide, yeah. This slide provides a brief overview of the program I did there. SB 1383 extends beyond directing waste management and recycling operations and staff. This slide shows that every department within local government will be affected and have a role to play. Each department in the city of Villa Park will need to understand how SB 1383 impacts their work. Jurisdictions should be thinking and planning for the staffing they will need, whether they will task their direct service providers to staff some activities, and whether they will contract with other entities such as environmental health inspectors or consultants. We have examples of city councils and boards of supervisors. I could start right there. City councils and board of supervisors will need to pass local ordinances to require all residents and businesses to subscribe to services. In the same, city managers and chief administrative officers will be involved in capacity planning, directing procurement, and establishing edible food program in the city. Finance and legal staff will be involved in local enforcement ordinances. New collection fees and insuring programs are adequately resourced. Purchasing staff will be central to procuring recycled organic products. Public work staff are involved with the hauler agreements, local waste management processing facilities, organic waste recycling facilities, and civil engineering activities where compost may be utilized. Public park staff may be involved with assessing the need for local compost application of parks and city landscaped areas. And environmental health staff may be tasked with enforcement duties, including inspecting commercial food generators for compliance with edible food recovery requirements. And lastly, public transportation and fleet departments could be involved in procuring renewable natural gas for city and county-owned vehicles. Jurisdictions are responsible to implement edible food recovery programs in their communities, which include providing education and outreach, assessing capacity of existing edible food recovery, conducting inspections of Tier 1 commercial edible food generators and food recovery organizations' services beginning 2022, and inspections of Tier 2 commercial edible food generators beginning January 1st, 2024. Leaders in your jurisdiction should be planning for this program and deciding which staff will have responsibility. By January 1st, 2022, jurisdictions are required to have an enforcement mechanism or ordinance in place. Between January 2022 and December 2023, jurisdictions need to identify businesses in violation of the regulatory requirements and provide educational material to those generators. Beginning January 2024, jurisdictions must take progressive enforcement action against organic waste generators that are not in compliance. CalRecycle sets a maximum timeframe that a jurisdiction has to issue a notice of violation and issue penalties to a generator. The jurisdiction has the flexibility to develop its own enforcement process within these parameters. The jurisdiction has the flexibility to develop its own enforcement process within these parameters. An early-world bus education program will minimize the, the amount of F enforcement action needed. Cal recycle will authorize low participation in rural area waivers which delay or exclude implementation of some of the requirements. However, Villa Park does not meet the threshold for a low-population waiver, and therefore will be subject to implementing the collection requirements of Article Three beginning January first, twenty twenty-two. Cal recycle would be directly responsible for ensuring compliance. However, jurisdictions are required to provide education and outreach to these entities. SB thirteen eighty-three is a statewide target and not a jurisdiction organic waste diversion target. Department, however, our, our department has included some aspects of flexibility in the enforcement of the regulations that are similar to the AB nine-three-nine defate effort requirements. If Cal recycle makes a determination that a jurisdiction is violating one or more of the requirements and Cal recycle issues a notice of violation, a jurisdiction will have ninety days to correct. Most violations should be able to be corrected in this timeframe. For cases where the jurisdiction may need a little additional time, the timeframe can be expanded to a total of one hundred and eighty days from the date of issuance of the notice of violation. For violations that are due to insinuating, ext- extenuating circumstances which are barriers outside the jurisdiction's control and the jurisdiction has made a substantial effort, the regulation allow for the jurisdiction to be placed on a corrective action plan, align up to twenty-four months to comply with the date of issuance from the notice of violation. An initial corrective action plan issued due to inadequate organic waste recycling infrastructure capacity may be extended for a period of up to twelve months if the jurisdiction has demonstrated substantial effort to Cal recycle. Substantial effort is where jurisdiction has done everything within its authority and ability to comply. It does not include circumstances where a decision-making body has not taken the necessary steps to comply. A failure to provide adequate staff resources, a failure to provide sufficient funding, or failure to adopt the ordinances or enforceable mechanisms. Penalties are imposed as a last resort after all compliance actions have failed. If a jurisdiction does not meet the deadlines in a notice of violation or corrective action plan, the department has another opportunity to exercise enforcement discretion by determining whether to commence an action to impose penalties. If the department decides to impose administrative civil penalties, it shall serve an accusation and hold a hearing if requested by the respondent. It's roughly a one hundred and eighty-day process. Cal recycle collaborated with HF and H Consultants Diversion Strategies and Deborah Kaufman Consulting to develop four model tools. Model franchise agreement, a model mandatory organic disposal reduction ordinance, a model organic waste product procurement policy for compost, mulch, renewable gas, electricity from biomass, and recycled content paper. And lastly, edible food recovery agreement. Cal recycle posted the model tools on, on our SCLP Education Outreach webpage for your use. Please let us know if there are other tools that you need as we have a large list of tools that we will be developing in the next eighteen months. Thank you for your time. Um, if you ha- if you are interested, you can sign up for our listserv, which is the website at the very top. You just subscribe to our listserv and you'll get the most updated information for SB thirteen eighty-three. The next is the webpage for SB thirteen eighty-three and SLCP. And then your local assistance market development liaison, Catherine Ferrer. She's available to answer any questions or any concerns. She's always available for the city. And that's pretty much it. I want to thank you for having us. Um, and now I can open it up for questions. I'm sorry, I, I lost track of my slides, but I really apologize for that.
What happened, thank you, Mr. Taylor. Um, that was a lot to, uh, to take in. Um, I, I have some questions, but I'm going to open it up and see if any of my, my fellow council members have any questions.
I'm Councilman Colacott here. Um, we've, um, our city has already started discussions with our, our waste hauler that, which is our Republic Services, and also the Orange County Sanitation District on which, which we participate in, has, uh, begun constructing, the design and construction of a food waste recycling plant or a process, which they will take the food waste and incorporate them into the, uh, the, uh, their digest, digesters. The benefits of this is it will produce methane that will be used for the electrical generation at the sanitation district plant, and will also produce a high-quality compost that can be used for food production. So, uh, you know, we've been, we've been on this.
Thank you.
Uh, council member, thank you so much for that. And I, you know, I just want to express, I think that's really important. Villa Park is, is really leading, uh, many jurisdictions, and I really appreciate, um, the council's leadership in this space.
Um, just another question. Will you be participating in the ACC Orange County, uh, Energy and Environment Committee? Uh, will you be making this presentation to them?
Oh, that's a great question, Jeff. I'm not aware that, that we've connected.
No, I haven't connected with them. If I can get their information, I'll connect with them and offer a presentation to them.
Steve Franks has the contact information.
Okay, I'll talk to Kim and then Kim will get back with Kat. I'll get it, don't worry. Thank you.
We do have a meeting coming up. I'm not sure how soon you'd like to speak.
How so, how soon is the meeting?
I just got the, uh, saw the notice in my in-basket. I haven't opened it up to find out the exact date yet, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, okay.
Thank you. Um, so, uh, so am I to understand that by January first of twenty twenty-two that we have to have in place a city ordinance pertaining to this program?
Yes, Mayor, that is, that is correct. And one of the tools that we have developed is a model ordinance. Um, I, I like to describe it as plug-and-play. Um, it's been developed so that the city staff and, and your legal team can, uh, remove the things that are not applicable to the city, uh, put in the specifics, um, uh, for your programs. And so we've designed something that, uh, based on a lot of stakeholder feedback from various, um, uh, cities across the state. Um, it's something that I think is really user-friendly so that you don't have to start from scratch. But yes, um, that would be an important component to have in place by, by January first.
Okay, and then I, if I heard correctly, um, the, the containers that we're going to have the different labels and stuff, those aren't supposed to be coming out for quite some time. So in reference to your, um, edible food recovery program, are, are the burden on the city to provide those containers?
Uh, Councilman, Mayor, let me, let me, we're working with Republic on a proposal at this point. So we wanted to get the council familiar with kind of get started in discussion. Uh, we've had some discussions significantly with, um, with Republic and with the county and sanitation district, et cetera. There's a lot of players involved. We just sort of wanted to, instead of springing on an ordinance to them later on, we wanted to kind of give you an overview. So you got a lot of information today, but we're working forward on this. There's a lot to come. Uh, it is a big issue, um, and it's going to be an issue that sort of uh, changes a little bit of how we do things in Villa Park. But I think we're on top of it. Like, uh, Councilman Colacott said, there's a lot of players already moving and a lot of moving pieces. So, uh, with respect to that, um, we don't have the specific proposal yet from, or we haven't finalized it with Republic. We will be doing so and we'll be getting back. Um, we are well on our way to meeting the compliance requirements. So I think we will do so. Uh, so I like, I like they've indicated from Cal recycle, we're doing what we need to do. But part of that was an education process to first get the council on board and understanding the issue and sort of that's, that was today, the introductory overview. There'll, there'll be a lot more coming and we'll advise you accordingly.
Thank you. And Ms. Morgan, Mr. Taylor, if we could get a copy, I don't know if we already have one or not, but I would like.
We have one, we will just, we have one, yeah, we do.
I'd like to spend some time kind of dissecting that. So, uh, Ms. Morgan, Ms. Taylor, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you for having us.
Have a good, have a good evening.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, um, Orange County Sheriff's Department and, um, Captain Newsom.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members and those attending via Zoom. So, uh, I have, um.
Melissa will run a slide for you if you.
Okay, great, perfect.
So Melissa, if you want to pull the strings, if you will.
So I want to present to you the twenty twenty end-of-year report for the Sheriff's Department in Villa Park. So one thing's that's a little different this year, uh, comparison to what we've done in the past is past reports were, uh, used compiling data taken from our computer dispatch system or CAD. And this report is taken from our field-based reporting system. It's a little more accurate. And basically the difference is CAD captures the calls for service as they come in, uh, whereas FBR is the actual port that's generated from those calls. So how that might work is you might get a call of a residential burglary, which would show up in the CAD as a residential burglary call, and the deputies arrive, conduct their investigation, and determine that it was, uh, simple petty theft. So I changed it to FBRs because I think it gives us a little better accurate, uh, representation of, uh, the actual events that occurred in the city of Villa Park. So that's the change from previous years. Uh, one of the things that's also available but not available yet would be the Uniform Crime Statistics, uh, through the FBI and Department of Justice. So we don't have those as of yet. So this is just, uh, information based on our field-based reporting. So on the next page, uh, we have a comparison between our two thousand nineteen and two thousand twenty incidents. And these include incidents that are listed which range from, uh, the top to the bottom, uh, murder, robbery, and assault with deadly weapon, which fortunately we didn't have any of those for the year, uh, nor did we last year. So Villa Park still remains a very safe place to live. Uh, then our property crimes, so commercial burglary, residential burglary, vehicle burglary, grand theft, petty theft, and then I added in vandalism this year. And then the last category is stolen vehicle. So if you look at that and go down to the bottom, uh, chart of twenty nineteen, you can see we had an overall, um, decrease in reported crimes of five crimes. However, there were some, some increases in some categories, uh, primarily, uh, residential burglaries. We saw an increase in five, uh, residential burglaries. And that seems to be a trend that's kind of occurring across the county that we're monitoring and we've been, uh, working with some task force on the department, uh, some joint investigations along with, uh, our other investigative details and some other agencies to try to, uh, reduce those types of crimes. So if we go to the next page, uh, what I did this year, um, is threw a comparison up with the next closest city that the Sheriff's Department provides contract law enforcement to, uh, the next closest to Villa Park, which is Laguna Woods, uh, in calls for service. So you see Villa Park, we had, uh, almost thirty-five hundred calls for service. Laguna Woods had almost thirty-eight hundred calls for service. Um, one of the big differences though between Laguna Woods and Villa Park is the population. Uh, Laguna Woods is close to three times Villa Park. They have, uh, over sixteen thousand residents, whereas Villa Park is about, uh, six thousand. So there's a difference in population. But if you look just to, just to kind of give you some type of comparison where Villa Park uh, kind of sits in the, the big picture things. If you look at Laguna Woods, uh, using the FBR system, they had reported a hundred and thirty-six, uh, those incidents, crime reports taken, whereas Villa Park had fifty. So I think overall doing pretty well, uh, with the, uh, crimes. Obviously, we like to see everything be zero, but, uh, we just keep working at it. And we roll to the next page there. This is a, a comparison of change from two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty. So again, Laguna Woods is, is on there just for your kind of frame of reference. But if you look at Villa Park, uh, you see the top three categories. There was no change obviously because we had zero the year before and zero now. Our, uh, commercial burglaries, we went down two. Obviously Villa Park doesn't have a large commercial area, so uh, we're fortunate we don't have a whole bunch of those. Our residential burglaries however went up seven incidents. Uh, that's a, a pretty good change for that size area. Again, this, uh, appears to be kind of a trend that is county-wide. Uh, I don't have, uh, you know, uh, actual data on that now because that's still being compiled by our, uh, statistic department and crime analysis. Um, we'll have that here hopefully pretty soon. Uh, vehicle burglaries went down, uh, five incidents, and, um, petty thefts and vandalism's also went down. So that's good. I think a lot of that has to be attributed to, um, you know, possibly more people being home, um, and more use of like surveillance-type cameras. And then you see the last category there, the stolen vehicle reports. So that increased by four, uh, which is a pretty significant, um, amount for Villa Park in, uh, you know, comparison to previous years. It's usually just one or two. Uh, again, that seems to be a trend that's kind of county-wide, uh, with stolen vehicles. They're up, uh, across the county and in sheriff's areas. So, uh, hope to have some more finite numbers on that here in the next couple of months. So we have a chart that shows a change, um, between last year and this year. And for the most part, we're, we're about the same in each of those categories, um, for our types of crimes, not, not a whole lot of change. In the following page, there's an actual, uh, crime map that shows where these incidents occurred. And you can see most of them kind of in that center-band area of the city. And most likely this is because those areas are a little more accessible uh, to our criminal offenders off, uh, Santiago and Villa Park Road in center area. So that's, uh, the, the crime locations. And if we go to the next page, here's our traffic-related incidents. So for the year, we had a total of ten traffic collisions, uh, three injury collisions, seven non-injury collisions. Still a pretty safe place to drive. Uh, we issued two hundred traffic citations and seventy-eight parking citations. We made one DUI investigation and arrest, and we had zero, uh, driving under the influence-related traffic collisions. And then below that is a chart breaking down, um, the age group and the number of types of incidents. So, uh, dark blue being, uh, not, uh, not drinking at all, so we ruled it out. Whereas the light blue is impairment unknown. That could be if, um, the driver left the scene and not applicable, has some other type of factor like, um, um, another party was involved or, um, that type of incident. So for the most part, um, we're good. No, no driving under the influence collisions, and that's what we, what we like to see. And the following page breaks it down by collisions by the time of day. And, uh, it's pretty typical. Our three biggest times are in the morning. So, you know, it's kind of hard to see those numbers, but, uh, the kind of lime-green color is from five in the morning to nine in the morning, which, uh, we had two collisions, count for twenty percent of our collisions. And then, um, the teal color is twelve to four, three collisions, thirty percent. And the pink is from four to eight, two collisions, uh, twenty percent. So those are obviously, uh, your typical, typical commute times, which is when you're most likely going to have, uh, traffic collisions, so. And in that bottom chart, again, those, uh, titles under the bars are kind of hard to read. So the first category is, uh, collisions based, uh, where the primary collision factor was speed or unsafe speed. And then the second three, uh, incidents were other improper driving. So that's kind of like a. So that's kind of like a catch all type vehicle code situation. And then the, there were those three of those. And then the next light blue mark was one incident for red arrow or stop sign vehicle code violation. So someone failed the eagle for either a stoplight or a red turn arrow, something like that. The next incident was one incident, and that was unsafe turning movement. So that could be unsafe lane change or turning in front of another vehicle. And then the last category, one incident is unsafe backing or starting. That could be, you know, backing into another car in a parking lot or pulling out into traffic, that type of situation. So. Overall, pretty good on our traffic collisions. And we just want to remind people to keep driving safe. Don't do distracted driving with the cell phone and radio and all that stuff. And then on the next page is the actual breakdown of where the collisions occurred at. And you know, fairly well dispersed. But again, most of the collisions are occurring Villa Park Road in Wanda area, kind of the major throughways for the city of Villa Park. And that concludes all the information I have, and I'll take any questions.
Thank you. Counsel, do you have any questions? No.
It's hard to get, hard to get much safer, isn't it?
Yeah, we're going to try though. We're going to try.
Do we make this information available to our realtors? This is, I know when I talk to people interested in Villa Park, I always tell them that this is about the safest city you can find. But this presentation is excellent and might help express their, communicate the point to prospective purchasers of the property in Villa Park.
Councilman or Mayor Pro Tim Zimmerman, did you have a comment?
I had a quick question about Captain Newsom. I'm not sure if you were involved or knew about the flyers that were distributed to residents in this past month. And if you had a report or any information about that that you could provide. I know I had several residents ask about it. And I wasn't sure if we were going to make some sort of.
Yeah, those, those were the, the hate mail type flyers. Yeah. So there was, I think, two separate incidents where they were distributed in Villa Park. We also had them distributed in some of our other close by unincorporated areas. So we did take reports on the two incidents in Villa Park and the other areas in the county that was passed off to investigations and I actually forwarded it to our Special Investigations Bureau, who has a detail that handles like all the hate groups and that type of stuff. So with that team and then through what's known as the Orange County Intelligence Assessment Center or KIAAC, which is basically a hub of information. It's kind of like a task force with FBI type situation. So they're sharing a lot of information. It's an ongoing investigation and can't really divulge too much about it at this point. But they're definitely working that case and I can hopefully give you some update here, you know, pretty soon.
Fantastic. Thank you so much. That's exactly what I would, you had presented a lot of that to us and we had talked about it. I just wanted to, you would say it much more eloquently than I would. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Captain, thank you very much. And, you know, again, thank you to all your deputies. This city is very safe and, you know, we definitely appreciate everything you guys do and love the graphs. I'm a data person. I love comparables. I was right up my alley and I was getting as close as I could to, you know, absorb it all in. So thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, next, Orange County Fire Authority, and we have Assistant Chief Johnson. Welcome.
Well, thank you. Thank you very much, Madam Mayor and Mayor and members of the council and all attendees tonight. Phil Johnson, Orange County Fire Authority. Our report on incidents ranged from December 15th to January 25th. We had a total of 67 calls for service within the boundaries of Villa Park. And I'm very happy to report that there was no structure fires during that time. This month, we'd like to remind you to check your smoke alarms. It's always important. Almost two thirds of all home deaths occur in homes with no working smoke alarm. You may have caught a story that was recently out in the media from a few days ago, somewhere else in the country. There was a fire in the house. Four people were in there. It was the middle of the night. There was no working smoke alarm. And only one person noticed the fire because only one person could smell it. The other three had COVID and had no smell. So those are some, that is something to really keep in mind now, especially with COVID around working smoke detectors. And I never thought that would be interested in smoke detectors due to COVID like that. But there's definitely a nexus to that. So fortunately, everybody made it out safe. So what we, what we would like for everybody to do is install smoke alarms in every bedroom, in hallways, outside bedrooms or sleeping areas, and on every level of the home. Install on the ceiling or high on a wall. Make sure they're at least 10 feet from the stove and three feet from doors leading to the kitchen to reduce the risk of false alarms. Because when we get those false alarms, for some that may not be the best cooks in the world, the, the temptation is to take them off of the ceiling and put them in a drawer somewhere and forget to put them back up. Smoke alarms should not be installed within three feet of bathrooms, tubs, showers, or ceiling fans, or whole house fans, or forced air heating or cooling ducts. Same thing. It'll either trigger false positives, or it'll keep the smoke away from the alarms. Another important thing is to check the manufacturer's date and replace all alarms when they are 10 years old. Replace alarms immediately if the manufacturer date is not listed and smoke alarms and fire extinguishers are easily, easily obtainable at the home centers like Depot and Lowe's and other places. We also recommend using interconnected smoke alarms. When one sounds, they all sound. Special alarms with strobe lights or bed shakers are available for people who are deaf or hard of hearing. And test all smoke alarms once a month and follow their, the instructions for cleaning, for cleaning to keep the smoke alarms working well. If one does sound, take it seriously. Go outside and stay outside. Go to the pre-ranged meeting place, call 911 from a cell phone or a neighbor's phone and stay outside till firefighters tell you it's safe to go back in and don't re-enter under any circumstances until we've gotten there. And also have the home escape plan. Another thing I'd like to cover tonight, as we know, we've been getting quite a bit of rain and we've got quite a storm in the forecast coming for Thursday and Friday. The National Weather Service is pretty concerned about this as well as we are. The Sheriff's Department, we work hand in hand with them as well as Public Works. With the storm coming Thursday, Friday, the Orange County Fire Authority is, and some of the other departments around are upstaffing for this to get ready for it. The upstaffing is including fire engines, extra bulldozers, hand crews, our helicopter, as well as swift water rescue teams and, and overhead. We're taking this very seriously. Our upstaffing should start about eight o'clock on Thursday morning and go through Friday night, and we can go longer if necessary, depending on, on what's happening around the, around the county. I need to remind everybody for flooded roads, don't try to cross them in your car. It doesn't take much water to move you around. And the other thing too is for folks in the canyon areas, please, if there's an evacuation warning, get out early. There's nothing that we can do to stop water or a hill coming down, but you can stay out of the way and then it's going to be your best chance of survival. So please, please heed those warnings when and if they come through. I'll, I'll take any questions if there is any of the council.
Thank you. I, I wanted to make a comment that I know you guys have been instrumental in helping roll out the vaccine. And we really appreciate that.
Oh, you're very welcome. Thank you. And it appears, as we've seen on media, that we might be starting to turn the corner on this. The numbers are starting to go down. And as you mentioned, Ms. Mayor, about the California opening things again. And the same thing, even our numbers within the department with people that are COVID positive, those numbers are taking quite a dip. So there's hope for the future. And on a personal note, I think, I think we're out of the woods once we see Disneyland open again.
Counsel, any comments or questions?
A quick question.
Yes, sir.
About the smoke detectors, we actually just went through and replaced all of our smoke detectors. It was the 10-year replacement cycle. And I did a little bit of research. I noticed there were two different types of smoke detector. I wondered if you could talk briefly about the, the detection types for smoke?
Yeah, there's photoelectric and there's ionization. There's, there's ones that literally see the smoke and there's the others that basically smell the smoke. And it's, it's picking up the particles in the smoke. The ionization ones are the, are the better ones because you get, you get an earlier detection with that. They'll pick up, they'll pick up smoke sometimes even before you will, if you're not seeing it or smelling it right away. They do act pretty quick. Matter of fact, I had one go off in my house in the middle of the night. And of course, we all got up and got moving. Unfortunately, it's, something was malfunctioning with the detector. It was within 10 years of its life. It was clean, all of those things. So we just replaced it. Fortunately, it was not the 2:00 AM fire drill that we wanted to have in the Johnson house.
Yes. Thank you very much. I, the other, the only other thing I was going to mention on that was we did notice there were the battery technology on some of them. They do have the longer lasting batteries in some of those now. So you don't have to necessarily replace them constantly, although you still want to, even with those, you still want to continue to test them. I just.
Yeah, absolutely. Testing is very important because you never know. It, it is a machine. It can fail at any time. But the, the, the reason they, we have the 10-year now is because of the different batteries that are in there. It's not your, your typical batteries that we're used to having. And it does make things quite a bit more convenient, but you do need to remember that, that 10-year mark, which of course, there's the other part. And if anybody's memory is like mine, I've got to write it down somewhere.
Thanks again.
Sure thing.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, all right. Thank you very much. Right now, we'll move on to Villa Park Library and our own Ms. Shawna Carlos. She was here. I don't know if she's.
I think we just lost her. I'm not sure. She's not showing.
I can go ahead and start with council member meeting attendance reports, and then we can jump back to Ms. Carlos when she shows back up. Will everyone agree with that? Okay, all right. So council member meeting attendance reports, Orange County mosquito vector control. That's me. We actually had two meetings since the last meeting because we had the December 15th city council meeting was earlier than normal. So we met both on, we met on December 17th and January 21st. The December 17th meeting, there was one West Nile virus positive bird intestine on 12/14. 18 West Nile virus infections this year with one death. The colder season means pure mosquitoes and vector control starts directing their attention to flea borne typhus. And there, at that time in December, there were two cases that happened to be in Cyprus. The Budget and Finance Committee gave a recommendation to approve $31,000, $35,000 for an A1 Super Duty Larvicide Sprayer to supplement their already owned adulticide super sprayer. So we gave the recommendation to go ahead and approve for a larvicide. And having both gives them a one-two punch, and they could now reach mixed areas more efficiently, such as marshes and cemeteries. For the January 21st meeting, that meeting was a lot of new trustees. So we went through a, you know, meeting, meet and greet, if you will, virtually. The new trustee appointments, over half of the vector control trustees were new. We also got a new executive board. Mike Posey from Huntington Beach is now the president. James Gomez from La Habra is the vice president and Peggy Wang from Yorba Linda is the secretary. There was no change in the West Nile virus cases from December. However, the flea borne typhus cases are up to 12 now. And this time of year, Orange County mosquito vector control starts to collect ticks to test for Lyme disease. So that is it from OCMBD. Is there any, any question? Okay, let's move on to Orange County sanitation.
Yeah, the Orange County Sanitation District was darkened January, so nothing to report.
Okay. Orange County Fire Authority, which is Councilman Rossini, and he is absent. Orange County Library Advisory Board.
So that's me. We did have a meeting last Thursday, January 21st. And a couple of really cool things to report on that. They had a state of the library where they talked about this last year. And then we talked briefly about a handbook that was created for new lab members. Something that I brought up last year and was really excited to see that that got some traction and they library turned around and produced a handbook that got released. So I was really excited. There's a couple of issues that the library faces that go through a, a lot of rediscussion when new members come on. And so having a handbook that kind of as a primer to bring people up to speed was fantastic. So I was super excited about that. For the state of the library, they addressed a bunch of the things that I've mentioned previously last year about their programs during the pandemic to try to get people involved. They actually had a really fantastic PowerPoint presentation that I can share with everybody. I think I'm just going to look at it and hit a couple of notes and talk about it rather than going through it specifically. What they talked about in terms of the library's internet access initiative that they have had to do with three different things. One is a Wi-Fi on Wheels program, WOW, where they had two mobile units that could be deployed throughout the Orange County Public Library service area that provided Wi-Fi access to people who wouldn't ordinarily have it. And these mobile devices would go to a location and then provide internet access to areas where they might have more people that needed service, in particular school locations or libraries that were near schools, so kids could get on to classes or get into access resources over the internet, but from their own car or from somewhere in a safer location. A second part of that was a Wi-Fi extension where they expanded the broadband internet outside the library. So if you were sitting in the, the area right outside the library socially distanced from people, you could still be outside safe and then still get internet access, which was fantastic. They also had a program for hotspot checkouts where you could go get a hotspot that you could take home with you, get internet access. If you didn't already have internet access at home, these were invaluable. So really fantastic programs that they provided during pandemic and are continuing to provide for the time being. They also talked, highlighted the OCPL app. So they have a, a library app for patrons where you can go on, you can download it on your, your iPhone or your Android device and go in and you can access your account. You can reserve things. You can look for eBooks or audiobooks and reserve, it's, it's a, just a good way to access your public library resources from your phone. Let's see, what else did they have on here? They did talk about the allocation formula study, which I'm thinking that we'll talk more about in April or May, once we have some of the recommendations back on that. I will hit that again. And then the last thing I want to talk about was Literate Orange. Literate Orange is a fantastic program they have done for almost 14 years with the, the Orange County Public Libraries, where they bring authors and readers and library administrators all together. Unfortunately, that had to be canceled in 2020, but this year they have a virtual plan for it where they've got four sessions and we will make sure that that information gets into the feeder so that everybody can know more about that. And that's about it.
That's great. So I have a question. So the program that you were discussing about the app, where you can go in and you can kind of order the books or the resources, then do you just, is it kind of like, like an Instacart thing where then you go and drive up and they just deliver it to your car?
So there are mobiles, if you've noticed at our library right next to you, they've got an outside area where you can take delivery of things. So I don't know, they'll necessarily bring it to your car, but they'll bring it out. So.
Okay, okay, great. Thank you. City Schools Advisory.
No meaning for City Schools this year.
Law enforcement advisory again is Councilman Rossini and he was absent. Villa Park Community Services Foundation.
Helps to come off mute sometimes. I was unable to attend the meeting in December because I was traveling. However, However, I know that there are several considerations on the docket tonight for us to take under consideration for the foundation with board appointments for the next few years. I am excited that we are, uh, seeing two new members join, join the board. I'm excited about that. Fresh ideas, new minds, new voices. I'm really looking forward to their, uh, their ideas and their participation going forward with, uh, Mr. Wu and Mr. Frackleton. So excited about that. We have a meeting tomorrow night, by the way. So.
Great. Thank you. Housing Legislative Committee. Colacott, was, weren't you part of that?
Uh, yes, I'm, uh, we did not meet. Um, however, uh, I've, uh, I would like to, um, uh, see if we can, uh, schedule a meeting of the committee, uh, in the next month or so to talk about, um, potential revisions to the junior ADU ordinance, uh, to make it, uh, the ordinance, um, more flexible for residents to participate in the program.
Thank you. Uh, Bridges at Kramer Place.
Uh, excuse me, Mayor?
Yes.
I believe, I believe we're also waiting for some feedback from the state on the housing element, uh, plan that we submitted. So hopefully we'll see that pretty soon too as well.
Um, Steve, do we know?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, uh, Councilman Pitts. We, he's correct. We did submit the draft, uh, for comments. It's a draft and it's just their comments. Uh, we believe, uh, they would, they've indicated we'll have a 60 day response period. So we would expect comments back in February, um, and we'll bring those to attention of the council immediately once received.
Thank you. Okay, I still don't see Ms. Carlos, so, um.
Texted me. She's having some technical difficulties getting back in. So, um, we might just keep moving forward and go from there.
Hopefully she, um, hopefully she can get in. We can, we can pop her in whenever she comes on. Okay, Bridges at Kramer Place Advisory, that's me. Uh, we met December 16th, um, we approved the 2021 schedule. Larry Haynes, who's the CEO of Mercy House announced that they, um, had the 300 person move into permanent housing, which is a fantastic accomplishment. And also there was a lawsuit filed in early December by the ACLU on behalf of 11 shelter residents. The lawsuit names Orange County, the City of Anaheim, and the operators Mercy House Living Centers, Illumination Foundation, and Midnight Mansion, Mission, Midnight Mission. The Bridges at Kramer Advisory Board, uh, we were not aware of the allegations, nor were the operators at Mercy House. We, we were prevented from discussing too much regarding the lawsuit, other than the alleged behavior is clearly unacceptable. And, um, that was all, um, we had on that. Uh, we do meet again in a couple of months, so I'm sure I will get, um, an update on that. And then, um, the new one, which is the Senior Citizens Advisory Council, so, um, the Senior Citizens Advisory Council is, um, it serves as an advisory body to the Orange County Board of Supervisors and the Orange County Community Services Office on Aging. And, and they deal with various issues affecting older adults in Orange County. And the purpose of Senior Citizens Advisory Committee or Council, also known as SCAC, um, is to assist the Board of Supervisors and the Office of Aging with strategic planning, program oversight and evaluation, and to promote, um, effective outcomes consistent with established local area goals, objectives, and performance measures. So at the city selection, um, uh, meeting, I was, um, nominated to be the District Three Representative for the Senior Citizens Advisory Committee. And so, um, I accepted it and then got voted in. And, um, the District Three is, um, Irvine, Testan, Orange. Here, let me get it. Um, District Three is Irvine, Orange, Testan, Villa Park, and Yorba Linda. It's a two-year appointment. And, um, once you get on the Senior Citizens Advisory Committee, you then pick a, um, um, like a, a subcommittee. And so I'm on health and nutrition and I was really honored to be, um, nominated and accepted because approximately 25% of our community are seniors. And, um, I'm really excited to share different programs, information. They have speakers. So the Health and Nutrition Committee is going to be having, um, speakers monthly, um, along with the SCAC or Senior Citizens Advisory Committee. And there's one that just came out tonight and that we'll put on the website. And it's, um, an invitation, uh, for an upcoming meeting. Uh, it's public, uh, February 19th. And, um, it's, uh, let me see if I can hold that. We'll have it on the thing. But it's, um, one of the big things that affects seniors is transportation. So, um, there's a presentation on the important topic of OCTA senior transportation issues and trends. And the guest speaker is, um, Jack Garrity. I'm sure I messed that up. Um, he's the department manager, um, para-transit services of OCTA. And, um, this is the flyer, but like I said, I just got it a few minutes before the, um, the meeting. So we'll put that on our feeder. But again, that's going to be, um, great information for our, our seniors and, uh, a public meeting. And I hope, um, I hope people can join on and, and learn something. And every time they have a new topic, I will definitely share that. So, um, that's it. Any questions on anything related to that? All right, then, um, moving forward, uh, with public comments this time, we will review comments from members of the public to address any off agenda items within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council, provided that no action may be taken on off agenda items unless authorized by law. We will also be reviewing public comments on each agenda item. Steve, uh, is there anyone that wrote in that would like to comment? Public comment?
No, Mayor, we did not receive any, uh, written comments.
Okay, and moving forward, we will go into our, um, agendized public hearings. So our first hearing is, uh, the review to waive reading in full of all ordinances and resolutions on the agenda. I will now open the hearing. Staff, please give staff report.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a monthly, uh, reading, uh, that we suggest that, uh, the council adopt that would enable us to move forward in an expeditious manner and we would recommend approval.
Counsel, do we have any, um, any questions? Uh, Steve, is there anyone that wrote in from the public that would like to comment on this item?
No, Mayor.
Thank you, council members. Uh, any discussion on this item?
Like to move, we approve.
Uh, so.
Second.
Perfect. Um, Steve, can you please take the vote?
Councilman Colacott?
Yes.
Councilman Pitts?
Yes.
Councilman, uh, well, Councilman Rossini's not here, sorry. Uh, Mayor Pro Tem Zimmerman?
Yes.
And Mayor Miles?
Yes.
Passes 4-0.
Thank you. Okay, um, on this next hearing, I am going to, um, uh, recuse myself. Uh, I have a business relationship with, um, the applicant's, uh, wife. So I have asked, uh, Mayor Pro Tem Zimmerman if he would lead us in this item.
I can text you or let you know when we, we're done with this, I guess.
Perfect.
Great. Uh, our next hearing is variance number 2021 dash 01, 18552 Jacquetal Avenue. Uh, I will now open the hearing. Staff, could you please give the staff report?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, this is a variance. Uh, it's for, uh, 18552 Jacquetal. And Mr. Walters will be put on here. He's he's the owner, uh, of the property. But before we get to him, uh, to answer any questions, uh, we do have, uh, a presentation from Ray Pasqua. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Walters, please mute your phone, please. Or, or Steve, you need to mute.
Good, ready?
Yeah, go ahead, Ray, sorry.
Uh, good evening, uh, Mayor Pro Tem Zimmerman. Uh, members of the city council, uh, again, a variance, uh, number 2021 dash 01 involves a corner, uh, property located at 18552 Jacquetal Avenue, uh, in the E4 zoning district. Specifically, the request is to allow an existing wall, uh, wrought iron fencing and pilasters to exceed the maximum allowable height of three and a half feet to three feet 11 inches within the first 20 feet of the front yard setback area. Uh, as constructed, the walls, which are set back five feet from the front property line spans the entire width of the property, except for a 19 foot wide section where the driveway approach, um, is located and will remain open. Additionally, there's a six to seven foot wide opening to provide visitor access, um, from Jacquetal Avenue to a paved walkway on the property. Walls were also constructed along the east and west property lines until it connected to the existing block walls. At the northwest corner of the property, the walls were designed and set back to comply with the city's clear view, uh, code requirement for maintaining line of sight, safety for pedestrians and motorists walking and traveling along Lemon Street and Jacquetal Avenue. Within the areas immediately in front of the wall, the property owner, uh, intends to install drought tolerant materials, plant materials to soften the appearance of the walls and to enhance the appearance of the streetscape along Jacquetal Avenue. City staff closely examined the variance requests, the property, its location, the adjacent neighborhood, adjacent neighborhood, and determined that the property did not possess, um, any inherent physical, um, characteristics or constraints such as an irregular, uh, shape, uh, difficult topography or any known onsite easements, uh, that would preclude the wall from being constructed in compliance with the maximum allowable height limit. Based on this analysis, city staff recommendation, the city council was to deny the variance request. Uh, for this variance application, there were a total of 28 public hearing notices mailed within, uh, 300 foot radius of the subject property, as well as, uh, it being published in the Orange County Register, also posted on the property. And to date, staff did receive eight letters in support of the variance application, uh, which you should all have a copy of. Uh, there were no verbal comments or correspondences received by city staff, um, in opposition to this variance application. For the record, I will, uh, read off the names of the property owners and their addresses who submitted the letters of support. Um, first one, Jennifer Eller at 18592 Amate Circle. Uh, Jay and Terry Applebaum, 18602 Jacquetal Avenue. Maureen and Will Fetter at 18591 Jacquetal Avenue. Jim and Marie Hyppock at 18581 Amate Circle. Eugene and Gertrude Wyson or Winston, excuse me, at 18582 Jacquetal Avenue. Ed and Patricia Wright at 9951 Timothy Lane. S. Hensley and Connie Smith at 9981 Timothy Lane. And Michael and Joan Doyle at 10001 Timothy Lane. Again, these are the property owners in the adjacent area that submitted letters of support for this variance application. That concludes my staff report and I'll be glad to respond to any questions at this time. Thank you.
Again, Mayor Pro Tem, we have the, uh, property owner, Mr. Walters. Uh, he's available to answer questions, um, should the council be so inclined.
Thank you. Uh, council members, do you have any questions of staff?
Um, is, is, why can't we, why can't the owner make, uh, adjustments to the, to the fence height? Fix this so you don't need this.
I would have to defer to the owner, Mr. Walters, if you want to unmute yourself.
Yes, hi, uh, good, good evening, council members. Um, the reason, the reason, um, I cannot do that is because the caps were poured, uh, were custom poured on top of the walls. Uh, my current columns are, my pilasters are two foot by two foot. And any of the caps that I wanted to have placed on top of the columns would have to be 25 by 25 and th- there's no, uh, existence of a, a cap for 25 by 25. So each individual cap had to be custom poured. And then there's also a, uh, LED light fixture that's underneath the cap that shines down on the columns.
Okay. So we're seeking approval way after things are built and already custom poured and so forth?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
As I had.
Councilmember Colacott, did you have any questions?
No questions.
Uh, I had a couple, um, uh, Mr. Walters, thank you for attending. I appreciate the time. I, uh, came out and met with you this past weekend and, uh, reviewed the, um, letters of support that your neighbors provided. Um, my question had to do with the timing on this too. Um, was there anything that, um, would have prevented you from realizing that you needed the variance ahead of time that we might be able to look at for the future?
Uh, nothing. I was not, the only thing I was instructed, um, so when I per, before I proceeded to put the wall in in the first place, I had, I had gone to the city, spoke to Bill to see what the setback was off the street. Uh, because I, I figured there was probably some type of variance off the street. Um, at that time, he wanted to know what address I was at and what I was doing. And so I gave him my address and I told him what I was doing. And he said the, the setback off the street was five feet. He had asked me if the workers had started the work. I said, yes. He said he would come out and look at the, at the, at the, make sure that the variance was in fact five feet. Um, when he did come out, the wall was five feet, but the columns were not five feet. So he made the con, my contractor, we dig the footings so that it was, um, per code. Um, at that time, he had mentioned that the walls, um, not the columns, that the walls had to be no higher than 42 inches. Now, my wife and I had done extensive research through the neighborhood to see what other people had done for columns. And we just felt that our columns were substantially a lot less than, a lot lower than what the current ones that we saw. So, um, I hope that answers your question.
Well, I, I can, I'm concerned too with not being at code, um, and then looking for the variance after the fact. And I, I think for me, um, this code variation is fairly minor. But, um, I, I want to make sure that we have a process in the city, um, for our residents. And I think this is something that we'll speak to later about, um, to make sure that these aren't done after the fact, that we're doing them ahead of time. Um, and that we don't end up in a situation where we're asking you to repour or to go back and correct work, um, moving the wine. I did talk to Bill about the, that you did move the, redug and move the, the, the wall and up the position. Uh, very much appreciated. And I just think it would have been great if we at the same time had done a full conversation about it and said, oh, you want to make this height uniform across your property despite the, the dip in the property level. It would be great if you did this. And, um, I really just want to make sure we, we get those ahead of time instead of after the fact.
I would really like that. I think that would be helpful, not only for me, but for other people that might be wanting to do something like this in the future.
Right. Steve, is there anyone that wrote in from the public that wanted to comment on this? Or do we just have the letters of support?
Just the letters of support.
Uh, okay, thank you very much. Um, uh, Mr. Walters, thank you for, for attending. Council members, is there any other discussion regarding the item you wanted to have?
Uh, yes, I believe, um, I've built a, uh, a wall around my backyard. And there's, the city has a cut sheet for, uh, for walls and includes all the information, all the, uh, you know, general requirements. So, and that, uh, then those cut sheets are available on the, that little, uh, kiosk, um, right by our front door. So they're, they're readily available. Um, I also toured the neighborhood, um, and, uh, there's, um, except the. um, except the, that one house on the corner of uh, Center Street and um, Santiago, uh, which is a very old house that probably predates our, the incorporation of our city. Um, I didn't see any uh, front yard fences that uh, exceeded the forty-two inch height limit. Um, I would have thought that uh, not seeing any of those in the general neighborhood would have uh, raised a red flag and may, you know, caused Mr. Walters to inquire as to uh, you know, what city requirements exist for height. And I don't believe that this uh, this height limitation is a, a new requirement in our ordinance that probably goes back to the uh, date of incorporation. Now, we did have, uh, oh gosh, about uh, four years ago, uh, we did have a um, resident come to us requesting a variance on fence height. If, but it was an unusual circumstance. Uh, the gentleman's property was up on Sarah Villa, and uh, staff had required that he widened uh, the street and construct a sidewalk, which resulted in about a seven foot sheer drop from the sidewalk down to his property. And uh, he requested a, an exemption for the height uh, as a public safety measure. And uh, we had a couple of hearings on that, but uh, ultimately was approved, but that was, you know, specifically for uh, a public safety measure. Um, anyway, um, and finally, I did tour some other uh, city areas and some older neighborhoods and other cities uh, around us where they uh, a number of uh, front yard uh, fences were constructed, and it has a very distinctly different uh, neighborhood feel than what we like in Villa Park. In Villa Park, the whole object, object is to have low density and openness, and uh, certainly a front yard fence line or fence like that nature, you know, one that's uh, greater than forty-two inches uh, is not consistent with that approach. So, anyway, those are my thoughts.
Mr. Pitts, do you have any others?
No, sir. I'm good.
Um, I, I'm gonna just briefly comment on, on what Mr. Calcutta said too, because uh, w- we actually from from our visit at this property, we wandered, uh, we took a very long walk around. Villa Park hadn't paid as much attention to pilasters before, and my daughter was uh, got a, a, a new education on this matter more than she maybe even wanted. Um, but we actually uh, were surprised that um, on almost every street in every neighborhood that we went, in every uh, um, area of Villa Park, there were uh, pilasters in front of people's properties, that these were everywhere. And just using my daughter and her height as a, as a, as a guideline, we found that there were very many of these that were uh, exceeding the forty-two inches, and um, it, it wasn't just three or four of them, it was dozens of them throughout Villa Park, and I, uh, it made me think that um, maybe we needed to review the code or that um, this is something that we needed to, to look at further. Um, if we were looking at the difference between forty-two and forty-seven in this one case, in other cases, they were five feet, six feet tall uh, in front of people's houses, and that was uh, maybe they had a variance for those as well, and I, I wasn't able to track all that down uh, yesterday or today, but to, that maybe it was something we thought about in the future. I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing now. Is there a motion on this matter?
I'll move to uh, approve the staff recommendation to deny the variance.
Second.
Uh, okay, um. Have a motion.
I, uh- Mayor Protem, could I ask, I'd just like to ask for our city attorney, because we only have three, I want to make sure the four votes are taken, that we are clear about what constitutes passage and what does not. Um, Todd, can you weigh in on that?
Yeah, here we have uh, three people participating. Vince doesn't count. Uh, I consulted with the mayor beforehand, and she had a conflict of interest, so under our code, her vote doesn't count. Here, because it's a resolution, um, in order for a specific uh, for it to pass in this circumstance, um, it should be unanimous under the government code.
Okay. In order for it to pass, in order, in other words?
Approval. In order for approval, well, Todd, clarify. Yeah, there's unique circumstances, um, as far as resolutions and ordinances, and it's specifically in the government code, and it also applies to contracts as well. And it says you not only need a majority of the quorum, you need a majority of the overall membership of the body. So here we have a five-member city council, obviously, and a majority of that is three, also obviously. So in order for this resolution to pass, because that is the action we are taking, approving a resolution, denying the variance, it would need three votes uh, in order to be officially passed by the city council.
And, and in the event, Todd, could you clarify what happens if it does not pass?
If it does not pass, there's no action taken, and the variance is still not approved, but it is a bit of a uh, procedural quandary, and the matter could be continued until the next meeting, when hopefully Councilman Rosini is able to attend and participate at will. At such meeting, you would still only need three people to vote one way or the other, because um, that is a majority uh, of the overall membership.
Does that make sense?
That makes sense, okay. Um. So, uh, Steve, can I just ask in terms of, should we just vote on this now? Should we, um?
But you, you have, I believe procedurally, you have a motion in a second, so the next action would be to take a vote.
Right. Would you please call, uh?
Well, one quick comment before you do. Yes. We have, we have guidelines, rules, regulations, and so forth in the city that people must follow. I too built fences and things like that. I have a permit for, and, and apply for variances for various things in my yard that I've done over time. And we need to follow those guidelines, and if we don't, we're just gonna have things built all over the city that we care not to have, and it'll change the the way the, the city is built. It's, you know, the entire character of the city. So we, we need to make sure that people follow the rules and understand the rules and, and abide by them. That's my two cents.
Yeah, I very much appreciate that as well. I, I do really like the fact that we have um multiple letters of support from the community, saying that what has been done is um, looks beautiful and is endorsed by their neighbors. Every single neighbor that they've, that, that's written in has said it looks really good. Um, and I think the neighborhood support does speak volumes too for somebody who's done a great job.
I'm not sure the neighbors understand, I don't mean to cut you off, but I'm not sure the neighbors understand about the ordinance itself and the way the thing, the code is written and the, and the compliance that's required. I think they're just looking at it aesthetically and they love their neighbor, and I, I applaud them for that, but we have guidelines and rules for reasons.
Yeah, I, I did ask Bill Tarrant about the guidelines and rules in this particular case. I was curious if there was a safety concern, or if there was a um, a, a, an overriding principle that would present a problem for approving this variance, that there might be something that uh, said, oh absolutely, we can't have this certain height because it does this. There is no obvious um, public concern for, to, that would be uh, a, a danger to anybody in, in approving this variance, uh, is, was his comment on that.
I, I think to speak, not to speak for Bill, but uh, it's a public policy issue, and the, the council has determined, past councils have determined, like Councilman Calcutta has indicated that that's the policy for the city. So variances have to come to the council for approval, which that's, is coming to the council for approval. But it would be a policy of past councils at this point, so uh, and it's, it's set into our ordinances. Um, so that's where we're at.
You know, and I, if I may add, uh, uh, Mayor Protem and City Manager, i- it is a policy, hence the ordinance, but also variances are a special creature under state law, and our ordinance mirrors state law and the specific requirements that you have to make uh, of a factual predicate near discretion in order to approve a variance. So um, there are state legal re- requirements applicable to this, which are incorporated into our code and are now subject to your discretion in application.
Got it.
So in other words, to approve it, there would have to be reasons supporting that. Is that what you're saying, Todd?
Yeah, so in order to approve it, we need to make those findings under state law. Um, if there was a motion to approve, we would most likely have to continue the item and come back to put together those findings in a resolution.
Well, approve, uh, clarify. Approving the resolution today does not con- it would not be, as, as presented, would not require those findings, because it's a denial, correct?
That is correct, even though our resolution makes specific findings that those findings, which would authorize a variance, we cannot make in this situation.
So if, if, if the variance was going to be approved, we would have to amend and change the resolution as presented, to find, to, to present factual findings.
Yes, to include the reasons why those uh, factual predicates exist in the discretion of the council, correct?
Okay, so I just wanted to clarify.
There are no, um, there are no reasons for why this variance needs to be in place. There is no acceptable approval of this variance.
That ultimate decision is the council's decision. Um, the findings required to, to make that are the ones outlined in the staff report and in the city's code and in state law. They're all the same. Um, so the city, if it wished to approve the variance, would have to come up with some factual predicates that meet those findings, i.e. unique physical characteristics, uh, the lack of giving this property a special benefit as compared to another property. Those findings outlined in the staff report, we would have to have facts to support those in order to be um, copacetic with the state legal requirements.
So because we don't have those facts, is that on, is that the onus to produce those facts on the city, or is that on the resident to, to do those?
Well, this hearing is the, the place where those facts are supposed to be drawn out, whether those facts, you know, from whomever they come from, city staff, the applicant and opponent, whatever. It is at the end of the day, though, up to the council to determine based upon what they've heard and what they've learned, whether those facts exist. So the source of the facts is not relevant per se. It's your interpretation of whether they exist uh, under the applicable legal requirements.
I really appreciate the clarification uh, on this. It doesn't sound like we have um a good reason for why this uh, variance should be approved. There is no um uh, underlying cause or uh, reason that has been given that's, that states this is the um fundamental uh, purpose behind the, of variance being required.
Uh, well, hence staff's recommendation, correct?
Got it. It, last question on this, um, is this something, if we uh, deny this variance at this point, um, does the resident have the opportunity to, to produce those facts and reapply for the variance?
Usually, um, when we deny a project, there's a code section uh, somewhere in our code, the exact number escapes me, that they are not supposed to come back with the same or similar project for one year after the time of the council's decision. The intent to obviously being, you don't want people resubmitting stuff every two weeks. However, if the council in, in, in its determination wanted to make its decision without prejudice, that, in my interpretation, waives that one-year requirement. Um, and they could come back and reapply for a variance.
I'm a big proponent of our residents who beautify their property, do something great that their neighbors really love, of not just saying, nope, do it again. Um, but in this case, they've um, not followed code, so I, I, I do understand we want to enforce that. Um, I guess uh, as an alternative proposal, maybe we uh, continue this and let the, the, the resident, or we, I guess we could, y- your recommendation was we vote on this without prejudice, was that the other?
Well, if, if that be the discretion of the council, um, the currently procedurally, a motion is on the table to approve the resolution denying the variance. If you would like to make a substitute motion um, to continue the matter until the next public hearing, this would be the time to do so. It would require a second from one of your um, fellow council members in order for that to carry the day and be voted upon.
Um, okay.
And a motion for continuance, just to throw in another procedural wrinkle, because it's actually not approving or denying a resolution, can be approved two to one.
Okay. Uh, I guess maybe it's another question then to my two other council members. Is anybody, are either of you in favor of a continuance to allow the property owner to to further mitigate the variance request?
Yeah.
Uh, I guess we're voting then.
Okay, would you like me to call it all?
Please do.
Councilman Calcutta?
Yes.
Councilman Pitts?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Zimmerman?
No.
So procedurally, Todd, help, help me here.
Yep, so the motion fails for the state law reasons I mentioned previously. So the matter is still an open question. At this point in time, in an attempt to uh, escape the procedural morass, I would recommend that somebody indeed uh, 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 do a motion to continue the matter to the next council meeting, because I think that's the only way we um, cleanly can resolve this matter.
So I'll move it to continue to the next meeting.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay.
Vote.
Steve, could you call the vote?
Councilman Calcutta?
Yes.
Councilman Pitts?
No.
Councilman Zimmerman? Our Mayor Protem Zimmerman, yes, so it will be continued until the next, the public hearing will be continued until the February, let me get to make sure of another date, February twenty-third, city council meeting.
Correct. Correct, and at that time, hopefully Councilman Rosini uh, can participate, and um, we don't have the same numbers crunch. At such point in time, though, if the vote is two to two, the motion to approve or deny would fail as well, so just keep that in the back of your minds for future reference.
I guess probably we should, I mean, the, the resident is on the line or uh, should be, will, will know that we've which way the council is leaning at this point, so we can, they can act appropriately.
I would suggest too that they uh, take a look at their construction and and kind of try to bring it within compliance, so they don't have to have this. We've got a little bit of time there for another month, but don't continue constructing something and make, make the situation worse until we have a chance to rule on it.
Those are the wise words. Thank you, Robbie.
Agreed. Um, I'll go ahead and bring-
Mr. Walters will comply with that.
Thank you for attending, Mr. Walters.
Thank you. So I've gone ahead and let uh, Crystal know that we are done.
Can you guys hear me?
We can.
We're good.
All right. Thank you very much. Okay, um, still under public hearings, uh, item number three, conditional use permit number twenty twenty-one dash zero one, um, one zero zero seven one Old Ranch Circle. Uh, I will now open the hearing. Staff, can you please give the staff report?
Ray, in interest of time, why don't you go ahead and just give the intro. Thank you.
All right. Um, good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. Um, again, before you, uh, for your consideration is a conditional use permit uh, twenty twenty-one dash oh one, uh, which involves the property located at one zero zero seven one Old Ranch Road in the E4 zoning district. Uh, specifically, uh, the request is to permit a, a two-story uh, detached accessory building that consists of a three-car garage uh, with an attached uh, home office on the ground floor and, and an accessory dwelling unit or ADU on the second floor. Uh, this conditional use permit request covers two code sections in the uh, city zoning ordinance. First is a section twenty-three dash uh, six point seven point twelve, which says that a conditional use permit is required for um, or if uh, five or more uh, garage spaces are provided on the property. Um, currently, the property has a two-car garage attached to the main residence, and as noted, the proposed detached accessory building that uh, includes a three-car garage for a total of five. Uh, second is uh, section twenty-three dash six, uh, ten- Second is uh section twenty-three dash six, uh ten point B. Point two, which says that a conditional use permit is required for detached accessory buildings that are more than fifteen feet in height. And the proposed detached accessory building is twenty-three feet, ten and a half inches. As measured from the finished grade to the tallest point of the building. And the purpose of these code sections is uh to review the intended use of having five or more garage spaces. And constructing a detached accessory building that is taller than fifteen feet. This review is to ensure that the purpose of the garage spaces and the detached accessory building are. Incidental to the principal permitted use by right. Within the E four zone and that they do not negatively impact adjacent properties. In short, the additional three-car garage is a permitted use within the E four zoning district. And will be used by the property owner for uh storing personal vehicles. With respect to the proposed detached accessory building, the additional height is to provide the vertical clearance necessary to. Create living space for the EDU on the second floor. Um and in accordance with the building and safety regulations. Uh city staff reviewed the project against all of the other development standards, including building setbacks, lot coverage, uh floor area ratio. And found it to be uh in all in compliance with those uh sections of the the zoning ordinance. For this uh conditional use permit, there were a total of thirty-one public hearing notices that were mailed out uh within three hundred feet of the subject property. Uh as well as published in the OC Register and posted on the property. And to date, city staff has received. Ten letters of support, actually eleven, I just got one tonight, eleven letters of support for this conditional use permit. There were no verbal comments or correspondences received by city staff in opposition to this application. So for the record, I'll quickly read off the names of the property owners and their addresses, um who submitted letters of support. Barry Pesner at one oh one seven one Sycamore Street. Craig Schur at one oh one forty-one Old Ranch Circle. David E. Lewis at one zero zero eight one Ranch, Old Ranch Circle. Uh Stephanie Facer at one zero zero seven one Workman Circle. Jerry and Esther Lou at one zero zero eight two Workman Circle. Tom Gulo at one zero zero one two Wildwood Way. Alice Kado Waki, Kado Waki at one eighty-nine twenty-two Ridgewood Lane. Stefan J. Laura Laurel at one zero one three two Old Ranch Circle. Paul and Janet Park at one zero zero nine two Old Ranch Circle. Ahad, Ahad Naya, one zero one two one Old Ranch Circle. And uh the last one that came in tonight. Came from Patricia Cokely at one zero zero seven two Workman Circle. Um that's a brief overview of this conditional use permit. I'll be happy answering questions at this time. Thank you.
For the record, Mr. Mr. Adams is on. Uh these call here, and he is the property owner. Record uh is is available to answer any questions.
Thank you. Council, do you have any questions of staff? Nope, okay, and Steve, um as Ray said, uh there was no one that wrote in.
Just just the eleven letters of support.
But but no, uh.
No additional comments, no.
Um council, do you have any questions? Discussion? Anything to ask, uh Mr. Adams? No? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Steve, can you please uh call the vote?
Hey, Councilman Colacott?
Yes.
Councilman Pitts?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mayor Miles?
Yes.
Passes four zero.
Uh thank you to the Adams for uh joining us. Next, we have the consent calendar. Uh all items on the consent calendar are considered routine and are usually enacted by one motion approving the recommended action listed on the agenda. Any member of the city council staff or the public may request an item be removed from the consent calendar for discussion or separate action. Uh council is, uh are there any items from uh four through ten you would like to remove from the consent calendar?
I would like to move approval of the consent calendar.
Say that again, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
I move approval of the consent calendar.
Okay, uh is there a second?
I can.
Okay, Steve, can you call the roll?
Councilman Colacott?
Yes.
Councilman Pitts?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mayor Miles?
Yes.
Passes four zero. Thank you.
All right, on to new business. Um our first item of new business is the Villa Park COVID nineteen Business Recovery Program, phase three. Steve, can you please give the report?
Thank you, uh mayor. Uh as you recall, we went through various phases um of. This past nine months, um where we were given some CARES Act money from the county under. The auspices of supervisor Wagner, gave us a hundred and forty-seven thousand and we conducted uh. Our first uh Business Recovery Act program for grant program. Uh we gave out awards for um. Businesses, I believe, I want to say seventeen grand awards, and subsequently, we received another. Uh seventy-one thousand, we received from the state and CARES Act money, and we then gave out um another seventeen uh awards. Uh subsequent to that, the County Board of Supervisors in December approved. Twenty-one thousand dollars of their county general fund dollars, which are discretionary, and those general fund dollars. Uh are a lot. They have not the same time restriction, so we have until June thirtieth to spend them. So we don't have the same sort of time crunch to get them out to the programs, to people, but they for for economic recovery activities. Now, to the extent that we have in the past two phases had seventeen applicants that. Received in both instances, grant awards, if you were to take twenty thousand and divided it by seventeen, and there are a lot more out there businesses, we have. Numbers of business, you know, uh over a hundred plus businesses in Villa Park that potentially be eligible. We are suggesting that we accumulate these funds and add them with a number of other opportunities, which we believe will be forthcoming. Such as federal money that the new administration in Washington DC has indicated that they'll be passing out. Uh for business recovery, et cetera. Uh so what I would like to do is be able to to consolidate these into a more meaningful. Pot of money that we can give out in a meaningful way to our residents, to our businesses, resident businesses. In order to support the economic recovery. I don't want to wait too long because obviously businesses are hurting, but I think if we uh by February of this coming. Next council meeting, we should be in a position to move forward with a plan. However, I do need some action from the council tonight. We to in order to uh receive the funds. The county asked us to file, to sign off, and so the the uh the city attorney and myself both signed a an agreement. Saying that we would spend the the monies in accordance with the sub-agreement, which basically says economic recovery and we'll report it, et cetera. Uh and we'll keep records along those lines. So we signed those documents and we currently have twenty-one thousand sitting in our coffers at this point. So uh I would like to ask the council to um. Ratify the actions we took to get the money and then authorize the second one is to uh direct us to return in February, because I believe at that time. We will have a a larger pot of money to distribute, but come back with a uh plan for opposed, a proposed phase three business recovery. Not necessarily mirroring what we've done in the past, but uh but depending on how much we get. And we then we believe there's some creative opportunities that we can work with the businesses to help um get money back into their hands. To help deal with some of the losses that they've dealt. So uh with that, those are the two actions I'd recommend. One, that we ratify the agreements that we. To receive the monies that we signed, and secondly, to give us direction to come back in February with a plan comprehensive that includes. The the various patchwork quilt of funds that we believe might be available and allow us to move forward. So that would be uh. My recommendation. Thank you.
Counsel, are there any any questions? No, uh anyone?
Take all we can get.
Yeah, okay, um then I, did anyone comment on this public?
No.
Public comment?
No, mayor.
All right, then I'll go ahead and make the motion to do as staff suggested, which is to ratify the agreement uh first, and then second is to. Go ahead and bring this um back in February.
Seconded.
Steve, can call the vote?
Councilman Colacott?
Yes.
Councilman Pitts?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mayor Miles?
Yes.
Passes four zero. Thank you.
Thank you, okay, um city manager report, number twelve, information from city manager and city staff.
Thank you, mayor. Um I appreciate you taking the opportunity to deal with the COVID. Uh that's been a, as the. Councilman Pitts can attest, it takes a lot of time, and we spent a lot of time over the last nine months, and now we're moving forward with the same sort of 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 effort. Uh I, in addition to the phone calls that you're on, I'm on probably at least one or two conference calls or. Or meetings, Zoom meetings, whatever you want to call them, team team meetings or whatever, uh a day, so uh this is sort of something that's sort of. One of the things I will bring to your attention, we will be receiving from in the running the pods. This the point of distribution of the vaccines, the county has committed to funding and supporting and and uh getting fifty percent of the staff. That would do that. So there's probably going to be uh anywhere approximately run costs for all five pods, a hundred and seventy-five staff. To get that going. So they've asked that the cities will be coming up with a proportion share, so we'll be receiving. A request from the county to help support fifty percent of the staffing. That can be accomplished two ways. Uh that that can be accomplished either through the allocation of city staff and or through the allocation of representative. Uh volunteers. There is also a grouping of professional volunteers that they'll be using. From medical institutions and, you know, the medical fields and, you know, those types of things. So the county is is. Using a third tranche of of volunteers, et cetera, but I would bring to your attention that we will be asked to. Come forward. I don't know, they'll actually give us a target number of people they would like, uh but we have been sending out information to our on the feeder. And I would certainly encourage anyone who's watching and and any council member, whatever, to uh volunteer. Now, it's not going to be a normal volunteer. They're not looking for a two-hour shift. They're looking for at least a three-day commitment, eight-hour day shift. Of three days each of and um this, the reality is that you keep in mind, if they're going to inoculate. Three point two million people, and they're trying to do that, and right now the super pods can get about forty thousand a day. You can see this is going to take some time. That's for the first dose. Then they have to re-duplicate that effort for a second dose. So this is going to take some time. Um secondly, on sort of on top of that, they've also indicated that. It likely looks like right now, based on information, and I uh Mayor Miles can add more, but they believe that. These vaccinations may be required annually, so it might not just be this year, it might be subsequent year, we have to do this. So. This is going to be a process. So the commitment of resources is rather onerous. Uh and we're going to be asked to provide somewhat or something. Now, as far as the reimbursement, the city. Are going to be responsible for um. Payment of any staff that are on, you know, that are going over there. Um the county is covering theirs. FEMA, and they've expressed and in discussions with FEMA about this, right now FEMA is only committed to paying a hundred percent of overtime costs. So a normal shift, anyone might merk during forty hours there, would not be covered at present. We're look, everyone's looking to. To try and get some action taken on that, because that's in that basis, we'd be paying for somebody to be not doing city work, but over there, working at one of the pods. It, that's an issue that we'll, you know, we'll have to work through, and they're working our way through, and there's a lot of, you know, that's a, that's a nationwide effort to. To get FEMA to come forward and pay for this. Uh but anyway, what I bring forward to your attention is, and to those watching. We are going to need people who are seriously about making, interested in making a commitment of volunteering. And it it can't be like, I'll do two hours today and that's it. This is going to be sort of a a longer-term commitment. And the reason they want that is because this is involves uh training of people, and they don't want to keep retraining every two hours or three hours of somebody. They want somebody. That's familiar with it. So candidly, they're looking for paid staff from the cities, because. Those people are going to be a fairly reliable source, and they know they can get them sort of, I would equate it to jury duty, where uh you get called and you have to go type of thing. Well, they know a city employee would be the same boat. So I would ask that anybody who would be interested, uh please contact City Hall. We have to compile a list. It's going to be fairly quickly. Right now, they don't have five pods up and going. They only have two. Uh but it will be sort of pressing and getting these shots out. It's a logistical issue. Uh I think it will ease up, my interpretation, it will ease up as we move through, because if they open up the pharmacies and. They open up the healthcare providers to start distributing this, then I think you're going to find that it's not the demand for. The county pods is going to diminish somewhat. Uh but anyway, um so that's that's sort of the 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 biggest issue that's pressing. However, we have a number of other issues, as you heard from the information on the Cal recycle going. Uh we have um. As we talked about, uh we'll be working on and we'll be intending to bring forward. Some ordinance related to sober living homes that we would like to get on our books uh in the in the near-term future. Uh and we'll have a a a number of other issues going on, and meanwhile, we'll also be working on our budget. That will get together in June. So we have some issues going on with the city, so I don't, I'm not sure I have a lot of staff to spare going over to. To work on the 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 pods, but I think we have to, uh we're going to have to contribute something. And I would ask that everybody kind of dig deep and and uh volunteer to the extent that may be available. Thank you.
Thank you, yeah, um you know, there's a lot of people that want to do something and want to feel like they can help and they don't know how, and this is a great opportunity. For some of those individuals to be able to feel like they're participating and making a difference and. I know we put it on the theater, but maybe we can also um communicate with the foundation. And uh have them maybe send something out, put it on their website as well, I think. Trying to get the volunteers, you know, especially in this time when you need to, it feels good to volunteer, right? We're all volunteers, so um. You know, it 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 makes you feel um like you're part of something, so. Um I I'm I'm hopeful we'll get a lot of volunteers, because I I do, I I don't think they realize, you know, our our um. Our city staff, you know, we're we're short. You don't have a lot to spare, as you say, so.
I would ask that they do coordinate, if they're going to volunteer, coordinate through the city, so the city gets credit. Because otherwise, they wouldn't know they're necessarily coming from Villa Park and uh. You know, I mean, we have a lot of generous people with their time, and I I fully expect some have already volunteered or expressed that an interest, but. To the extent that there is something coordinate, there is even spreadsheets that the city has been asked to fill out and coordinate volunteers for our own city, so we're. We're working on that. Um and again, the other issue I would want to say is any resident who might have a problem with the Othena. We're not experts, but they can call the hotline, and secondarily, if they have any sort of problems or any basic. Issues that we can help you with as far as loading the app or whatever, uh you can call City Hall uh on our city number, and we'll try and do our best to work through it. Uh we're not technically really sound with respect to that Othena app, but we'll work our way through it. And try and be the best advocate that the residents can have. Thank you.
Hey, Steve, question for you, if you don't mind. Um have we looked into the many thousands of people that are unemployed in the state? And lifting restrictions to allow them to provide the volunteer support without losing some of their potential benefits or something from unemployment?
Uh yes, the 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 county is working on that from their end. They're also working with retirees, et cetera, so they're working uh with the state EDD. Uh et cetera, uh employed, I forgot what the EDD stands for, but it's a state.
Employment Development.
Yeah, that, they are working through those to try and uh accommodate that. A lot of that requires some state action, so I think they're working to get. Some legislation, because there are some requirements about what makes you eligible, what makes you not. The county is is, they hired, as my understanding, they've hired um. A number of over two hundred part-time employees are ready to try and help get them going again, so I think it's been a considerable effort. And they're looking at every, any and every opportunity. Right now, they're using an awful lot of our fire personnel uh and paramedics. But the extent that we have another fire incident or something that demands their attention, that's, they're going to be pulled off immediately, so. So we, they're not going anywhere, as as um Chief Johnson said earlier, but at the same time, uh we, I I think we need to be prepared. said earlier, but at the same time, we I think we need to be prepared to supplement and fill that, but I think it's an excellent idea, they're tapping into, like I say, they they have authorization to use paramedics at this point to administer vaccines, and they've got a number of exemptions that the states approved, but it's they're they're sort of like tapping all sorts of opportunities, if you will, for that, I think there's there's a massive number, it's it's a very big logistical issue and a challenge.
Hence the importance of making sure that people that that do volunteer are able to make a commitment, and it's not just the, you know, couple hours a day.
National Guard too?
The National Guard will be deployed, that's again, a state has to call them down, I believe the the new administration has called on the states to do that, so the exact coordination of that is 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 something that's being coordinated through the state and then subsequently through the county, the county has ultimate responsibility for distribution, the health officer of the vaccines, so that's why, again, I keep deferring back to the county, because they have to, ultimately, it's all under the auspices of the health officer, so he has to authorize that, so to the extent that, under current regulations, unless sort of things change in Sacramento and Washington, right now, I think the deployment of the National Guard has been called out, and I think they are trying to figure how they will be deployed.
Oh, thank you.
Great, any other comments?
I was going to comment, I appreciate your comment, we're all volunteers, we have a lot of great volunteers in our community, certainly, I can bring this up with Rotary too, to see if any of them are interested, my inclination is to volunteer myself too, I want to make sure they've got the time and ability availability to make that commitment, I know my wife has already volunteered to be one of the medical personnel for those things, so.
I want to state for some clarity, because some questions have come up, if you volunteer, you are not getting not guaranteed getting a vaccine early, so there is a potential exposure issue, so some cities have expressed that, they think the county, the cities are putting pressure on saying anybody that, if we send an employee, you don't want an employee coming back potentially exposed and sick and losing that employee for whatever, so there is those discussions going on, but as of right now, volunteers are not necessarily guaranteed, however, many of them are getting them just simply because dosages can't be wasted, so at the end of the day, once they're unfrozen, they have to be used within a certain hours, and I Mayor Miles can tell exactly, I think they talked about it's certain number of hours before they're stale and no longer usable, so I think they're they're, you know, people sometimes benefit as a result of volunteering, and that may be one of the ways, but it's not a guarantee. So I would caution, people who feel vulnerable or things should be careful in volunteering at this point.
Any other comments? Okay, thank you, Steve, Mayor and Councilmember Matters, item 13, now we will discuss the reconfiguration of appointments of the 2021 City Council Committee assignments, are there any comments from anybody?
Well, my, I'd like to compliment you on nominating Vince Rossini to again represent the city on the Orange County Fire Authority Board, and yourself to again represent the city on the Vector Control District. With Vince's unique experience as a public safety professional, and yours is a biologist with the vector control experience, you are the best to make a positive contribution to these boards in our city. Vince's contributions have elevated him to a leadership position on the fire authority to the benefit of our city, and I expect that you, Mayor Miles, will similarly distinguish yourself again to the benefit of our city. I was first appointed to the sanitation district board at the same time as Vince was appointed to the fire authority, and again, because of my unique professional background, with 40 years of experience, professional experience as a water and wastewater professional, I know this stuff, I know the lay of the land. Like Vince, my board recognized my contributions, and I've become part of the senior leadership time, which makes it three for three for Villa Park, all three of our appointments to the to these boards have resulted in senior leadership. The Chair and Vice Chair have been on the board of the sanitation district, have been on the board for decades, reflecting the significance of my achievement of achieving senior leadership. While on the board, I've accomplished and am promoting much to the benefit of our residents. This morning, I received a call from the Board Chairman Dave Schaber, and expressing surprise and concern that on the the agenda did not reflect my reappointment. I'm, I ran for council to make a positive contribution to the city where I have lived most of my life, and I've done, again, much for the city, and reappointment to the sanitation district board will allow the opportunity for me to contribute my professional experience and knowledge to provide the most effective representation for our residents, so I'd like to move that we approve the recommend Mayor Miles recommendations with the substitution of me as the again, returning as the director and Chad Zimmerman as the alternate. I'll be, my term on council expires at the end of next year. Councilman Zimmerman will be gone for two more years after that, so I think that, or for years after that, I expect, so I expect he'll have an opportunity to experience being on the sanitation district board, but right now, we have an opportunity to continue to have experienced and knowledgeable representation at a senior leadership position on the sanitation district board.
Councilman Hawke, thank you for the comments, Mayor Pro Tim Zimmerman, I'm going to ask if you have anything you'd like to say.
No, I think we discussed this all last year, I'm super excited to be on the sanitation district board, it's something that I feel my qualifications will bring a different perspective, and that we all agreed to this last year, I'm just excited to take over.
Are there any other comments?
Move to approve the list as is.
I'm sorry, I was a little slow there, I'd like to make a comment as well.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, no, my fault, I was a little slow, so in looking at this and making the the committee assignments, I am going off of the recommendation that former Mayor Pitts had made last year, and that Mayor Pro Tim Zimmerman had requested last year and this year as well, and last year, Mayor Pro Tim Zimmerman is correct, we had a very good discussion, it was the February 25 council meeting, I felt we had a great discussion, it was very open, it was very transparent, and both Councilman Rossini and Councilman Zimmerman did make a suggestion that Mayor Pro Tim Zimmerman stay on his alternate one more year, and that this next coming year, which is here we are, the transition would occur, so my goal is to just follow through with what former Mayor Pitts had intended for last year, and what we all agreed upon. Councilman Colacott, I know that you have done an incredible job, served a very useful purpose, you are an expert, I know the sanitation district has, you know, expressed many times their respect for you, you are definitely an asset to them and to us, I do think that we need to move forward with the recommendations, primarily because we had all made an agreement last year, this time regarding the committee assignments, so with that, if somebody wants to make a motion.
I move that we approve the list as written by the mayor's appointments, 2021.
I'll second that.
Okay, Steve, can you please take the roll?
Sorry, I got unmuted on that fast, Councilman Colacott?
Yeah.
Councilman Pitts?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mayor Miles?
Yes.
Passes three to one, thank you.
And Councilman Colacott, I want to thank you for your years on the sanitation district.
I as well.
You too, Bob. Good work.
Okay, now we move on to individual council member information items. I would like to start with Councilman Colacott.
Let's see, one thing I would like to report is that participated in the, I participated on the ACCO C Energy and Environment Committee, which I would encourage Councilman Zimmerman to participate on too, if he's going to be on this committee on the sanitation district, there are two, two environmental issues that were discussed at the meeting, it was basically just an information meeting, one is on the air front, and that is that the ARB, the Air Resources Board is mandating a that buses be zero emission by 2040, and that makes California the only nation, state in the nation with this kind of a mandate, the technology is unproven on a bus, and also, the the cost for electric buses is 100 million versus, excuse me, would be in the hundreds of millions of dollars, plus there are additional technical and conversion costs, and this, our OCTD has already transitioned to natural gas, which is 99.9% clean, so we'd be making a very major investment for very little return. The anyway, there's also no funding for this, so this will affect our ability to provide bus service in Orange County results in significant additional costs. Second item was on the on water supply, as we've probably all read in the papers, Poseidon is proposing a desalination plant in Huntington Beach, basically at the site of the old Huntington Beach Generating Station, and the object is to reliably produce more water, but I made a recommendation that we also, that the committee also look into supporting or expediting use of the groundwater resource, groundwater recycling system water for direct reuse, at this point, the water is been, has been determined to be potable, and in fact, the water is distributed at conferences and so forth, and other countries currently recycle their wastewater in this this manner, it's a, this would come at a much lower energy cost than the Poseidon project, the technology is proven, and be not only a lower energy cost, but a lower total cost for the Poseidon water, last estimates I heard on the cost for the Poseidon water is that it would quadruple our water costs, so for our residents, if we can come up with, we can identify lower cost water supply, it would be to our great advantage, anyway, that's all I have to report on ACCOC, there is another meeting coming up, and I'll be addressing some solid waste issues at that meeting, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Pitts.
When I have to, if you'll excuse me, I have to
No, no, no.
To the airport to pick up a family member.
For safe.
Excuse me. Thank you.
You know, with the holidays and everything, didn't, there wasn't a whole lot going on, unfortunately, and with COVID and so forth, everybody's in the lockdown, so a lot of activities going on, I just enjoyed family being at home and in the holidays, and look forward to getting shots, two two members of my family have shots, so I'm happy about that, so looking forward to getting out of this thing completely.
Yep, thank you, Mayor Pro Tim Zimmerman.
So I will comment on one, we had the the, I got to participate in the Rotary annual party, which, given the conditions, as Councilmember Pitts puts it, it's been difficult to have events like that, and the current year president, Daniel Gray, for Rotary did a fantastic job of organizing a murder mystery that involved pets in the in the Zoom call, so that we could all participate, we had some great acting jobs, and some, just a lot of fun was had by everybody, and it was great to get everybody in together for a party like that, given all the other circumstances that we have going on, and the only other thing I wanted to at least make a last plea for, we may, we may be looking at promoting the Villa Park trash can put away program that the Villa Park Scouts in Troop 850 have been working on, where we have a couple, a few residents in Villa Park who were helping to put trashcans away, one of the scouts is my son, we had a discussion about how heavy some of these trashcans really are going up and down driveways, and we have some residents who could really benefit from having these, these young boys come in and take care of that for them, the discussion I had was that people are reluctant to ask for help, and I just wanted to encourage people that you're helping the scouts to to get time, to get hours by participating in the program, and that we'd all be much happier having the scouts perform this service and not putting anybody in any danger, so it would be great to, if you're interested in having your trashcans put out for you or put away, please contact us, and we'll we'll make sure that that gets set up for you.
That's great, I like that program, okay, I wanted to address the PFAS, PFAS Treatment Facility Project that Toronto Water District is is working on, and PFAS stands for polyfluoro alkaline substances, it's a whole bunch of manmade chemicals, but Toronto Water District and Orange County Water District are building this treatment facility to address and rectify the PFAS contamination issue in the water supply to get the wells back in operation as soon as possible, and a virtual town hall was had, was held by Toronto Water District on January 7 to discuss the project, and residents were able to address multiple concerns, and as a result, Jerry Villander, the GM of Toronto Water District, put out an email, and I wanted to read it, and the council, we all agreed that we would like to get it out there for the rest of Villa Park to understand, but before I do that, I want to make sure for everyone listening that that I have to remind them that Toronto Water District is legally, is legally exempt from any city ordinances or control, so that includes like zoning or building codes, etc., so in essence, the city cannot regulate what Toronto Water District does, that being said, I appreciate the Toronto Water District listening to the residents about the concerns that were raised, and they are going back to the drawing board, so as promised, I wanted to read the email that was sent to some of the residents from that town hall, again, this is from Jerry Villander, the GM. Dear neighbors, thank you for your communication and for participating in last week's community meeting, we appreciated the opportunity to provide more information about the PFAS Treatment Facility and to hear your questions and concerns, Orange County Water District and Toronto Water District are committed to working with neighbors to mitigate these concerns, as such, the construction mobilization previously planned for the week of January 25th has been postponed until the following items have been explored and until findings have been shared with the community. We are exploring the impacts of lowering the treatment plant facilities such that the total height would not exceed 10 feet above the existing elevation, we are exploring the impacts of constructing an enclosure around the treatment plant facilities, we are documenting existing sound conditions using an acoustic consultant, and the acoustic consultant will model sound from the proposed treatment plant facilities and determine appropriate sound mitigation measures, it's anticipated that we will have findings related to the above items in two to three weeks, and this email was sent January 12. Soon after, another community meeting will be held to share this information and to address further questions and concerns, please note that changes to the project scope are subject to approval by Orange County Water District and Toronto Water District Board of Directors. The issue of PFAS is one of great importance to Orange County Water District and its local water suppliers like Toronto, we have been highly focused on how to rectify the contamination issue in the water supply to get the wells back in operation as soon as possible, our overriding goal is to provide those we serve with high quality and reliable water supply, we look forward to providing you with more information about this project in the coming weeks, in the meantime, please do not hesitate to contact us, so I was just very happy, I was on that town hall, and there were a lot of, all the residents were actually very concerned, and so, and I was there just as a, you know, listened, as me, as a resident, so I was very pleased that Toronto Water District listened to their customers and are going back to the drawing board. So I was very pleased that Toronto Water District listened to their customers and are going back to the drawing board. So. Again, this is just out of courtesy to Toronto to let them know that we got the message out. One of the other things that I wanted to talk about. In the transition of the mayor is I said that I had some ideas and and being on the council for about two years. Well, for two years, one of the things I've noticed is a lot of problems where some people. They get these ideas to go ahead and do something to their homes and they don't realize. That they either have to get permission or. Get a permit or get a CUP or get a variance and, oh, it's just a wall or oh, it's just a fence or oh, it's just a whatever. And so. I know that we have dedicated, knowledgeable, wonderful staff. The problem is is. How do we make sure that our residents know that there is an actual, what needs to have a variance, what needs to have a CUP? What needs to have, you know, permits and what doesn't? And so I I thought, how can we make that interaction between the residents and and government, local government easier and more transparent? So one of the things that I'd like to ask staff to do is maybe every two years. Like a flyer or a checklist goes out to all the residents, kind of a. Like are like a, are you, you know, want to build a wall or are you, you know, these are the things that you have to get a variance for. Build a wall, do this, are you, what your setback is and. And something kind of catchy and just an informational, like if you're thinking of making changes, because we love when residents make changes. It beautifies the neighborhood, adds property value. You know, it it shows, you know, a concern and care for their community. But the problem is, you know, we find that sometimes people don't realize and it's a mistake. And then the frustrations mount because they have to stop their work or they have to change their work and. That actually happened to us when we very first moved in. We had built a wall and. This is seventeen years ago. We didn't know. How high it could be and we were above. We had to take it down and and lower it and we were okay with that, but it was just kind of like, well. You know, maybe if it's something with every new homeowner, they get this. I'm not sure, but. I just would like to make something where. We can do a checklist and it goes out. At maybe every even numbered year, even numbered year. And even though a homeowner may not. Be using it, they'll look at it, maybe they toss it, but. The goal is that maybe one day when they do talk about adding that, you know, extra fence or that new pileast or whatever. They'll go, oh, wait, I saw something. So I'd like to ask staff if we could do that. And the last thing is. I will be holding a virtual coffee with the mayor. So I want to. And 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 want to become safe to do so. I'd like to be able to change it from virtual and maybe we could go and and meet. At once a month at different of our local businesses here and and support each one of the different businesses. And I want to be able to be more accessible to our residents and let them realize that we are normal people. And I just, to anyone who's listening, I I hope you'll join me and. It it, they can come and talk about whatever they feel is relevant or not relevant about what's going on with, you know, the council, the city. The first one I'm scheduling for February sixteenth at nine AM and there will be a Zoom. Link or code that will send out on the feeder. And I'm really looking forward to interacting with our community and and. Being more accessible to our residents. So that's it for me. Appreciate everyone. Happy New Year. It's kind of a small crowd tonight. We wish Councilman Rosini a speedy recovery. And if that's it and there's nothing else, then I will close the meet.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, everyone. Have a good night. Good night. Bye.